Good evening, welcome to the Board of Commissioners meetings for April 28th, 2015. Our custom is to present the invocation and the pledge before calling our meeting to order. Today's invocation will be presented by our good friend, and I'm gonna mess this up, so come on up here and help us with it. Tafik, right?
That's correct.
Alright, he is a member of our Community Council.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate your hard work with that. We appreciate you being here. You're from the Islamic Center of Marietta on Pottery Springs Street. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
That'll be followed by the pledge. That'll be led by Investigator Jason Ray, who began his career with Cobb County Sheriff's Office in 2004. He has had multiple assignments during his career, and in 2014, he was assigned to the Criminal Investigation Unit, the Fugitive Section. So we appreciate him being here. So those of which do so... Oh, yes, Cub Scouts. Where are y'all from? Not everybody wants. What pack?
Six seventy-five.
Six seventy-five. Where is it out of?
Wisconsin.
Where do you meet?
Mount Calvary.
Mount Calvary. Boy, somebody's got a very deep voice. So, Mount Calv... We're glad you're all here. You're gonna assist with the pledge this morning? Okay, very good. For those of which do so, please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
God Almighty, guideth among those whom you have guided right, and preserve us among those who you have preserved. Take us for friends among those whom you have befriended. Bless us in that which you have bestowed upon us. Guard us from the evil of that which you have allowed, for it is you who ordains, and none can ordain anything against you. And never is he abused whom you befriend. God Almighty, we come to you asking to bless our world with peace. Help us to find peace, truth, and well-being in the world. Peace and security between nations, tribes, and races. Peace and sincerity in our hearts and minds. God Almighty, lead us from death to life, from falsehood to truth, from despair to hope, from fear to trust, from hate to love, from war to peace, and let peace fill our hearts, our world, our soul, and our humanity. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. And Cub Scouts, thank you, you're dismissed. Thank you. We'll now call this meeting to order. Earlier today, in our work session, we did not have a rehearsal. It was an actual work session, when we went through Tab 1 and Tab 2, which brings us to Tab 3. Nope, Tab 3, yes. Presentations. The first one is to be given by Commissioner Weatherford to present a proclamation to the Cobb County as volunteer medical director. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. Yeah, with Dr. Robert Gisness... Gisness, I'm sorry. I'm honored tonight to present this proclamation and...
Commissioner, how the white shirts come on up too?
The white shirts? Oh, my goodness. You called you white shirts? I call you hose draggers, but that's alright, so. Whereas emergency medical services are vital public service, the members of emergency medical services community are committed to providing life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Dr. Robert Gisness has served with dedication distinction as a volunteer medical director for Cobb County EMS since July of 1993. Quite a while. And has demonstrated the utmost leadership in highly competitive, competent, I'm sorry, medical direction to Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services in areas of emergency patient care and EMS service delivery. And as Dr. Gisness has dedicated his career to providing the highest level of proficiency in the EMS field through his active involvement in services of the community in the healthcare. And whereas he's been liaison between EMS field service delivery and local hospitals reviewing and evaluating all patient care protocols, policies, and procedures as practiced by Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services for over 21 years. We, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do here recognize Dr. Robert Gisness for his selfish service to not only Cobb Fire and Emergency Services, but to all the citizens and visitors to Cobb County, and we publicly thank him for his dedication in providing optimal emergency medical care to those in need. 20th day of April, 2015.
Dr. Gisness, we wanted to just to present you with a little gift for all your years of service. I had the honor of working with Dr. Gisness as a lieutenant when he first started in kind of the infancy of the EMS program, and with his help and direction, we got to see it go from basically providing advanced, or basic first aid, to providing advanced life support. Now, every fire engine you see has advanced airway equipment, they all carry IVs. We have numerous advanced life support rescues that are essentially ALS units. We have 12-lead telemetry that with certain patients, we're literally bypassing the emergency room, going straight into the cath lab, and all that starts on a fire truck. And, you know, we're seeing patients go home, walk home, or walk to their car, three and four days later, when just a few years ago, they had a different outcome, they didn't go home. And Dr. Gisness, thank you for your help and all that, and you did a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Not yet, Commissioner. The next item is Item 2, is to allow Clint Mueller, Legislative Director and Revenue and Finance Liaison for the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, recognize Commissioner Bureau Burrow for her service as Chair of the Revenue and Finance. Mr. Hankson, the Commissioner would like for you to join her into form, please.
Sure. Good evening, again, my name's Clint Mueller, I'm with the County Commissioners Association. We represent all 159 county governments in the state of Georgia. We provide training for all the elected officials and many of the county staff, as well as advocacy services on behalf of the counties of Georgia. Cobb County has always been very involved in ACCG, and we really appreciate the dedication and service that Cobb County has provided our association. Tonight, we'd like to recognize one of the Commissioners, Joanne Burrow, for her service as the Revenue and Finance Chairman for the 2014-2013 policy year. This is one of our seven standing policy committees. These committees meet over the summer months and decide what type of positions the 159 counties want to take with the General Assembly and Congress. They also advocate during the legislative session on behalf of county governments. This year, for instance, there was legislation passed dealing with property tax reform and also transportation funding. Those issues were discussed and came out of our Revenue and Finance Committee. So we really appreciate Joanne's leadership and all the services you provide at all 159 counties in the state of Georgia.
Thank you, everyone. It was really an honor to serve as the Revenue and Policy Chair. I learned a lot, and it was a very easy task with Clint and Ines and the rest of the ACCG staff that coordinated all the meetings and registration, and they fed us well also. I guess this is what happens when you get called out at a BOC meeting, when you don't attend the annual conference in Savannah. This was supposed to have been presented then, and since I stayed here and saved the county some money, Clint was kind enough to come and present this tonight. So thank you to you and ACCG and your staff for all the hard work you do for us. And I asked Mr. H. to come down because he's been very active, teaches classes for ACCG, and he can say a few words.
What a surprise. Let me just say, Commissioner Burrow has been real active with ACCG, and a few years ago, only not serving on the committees, we started the Learning Academy with its curriculums for continuing education training. And Commissioner Burrow really engaged in those. When she had to miss a committee meeting, it really is painful because she's really support that as well, and strong support of ACG and also the legislative issues. And I just want to say, it's been a joy and a pleasure to work with you, and I believe you went through one of my classes as well a few years ago. But again, thank you for what you do and how you represent this board and this county on ACCG, and how well Clint knows, stay up on the issues and working with GMA and others. So it certainly is a team effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint, for being here tonight. Item 3, to present certificates of recognition to the 6th Grade Academy 4-H. Commissioner Cupid.
Okay, can I have those who are here from Lindley 6th Grade Academy? And also Cobb County 4-H?
Good evening, how are you? Good. Hello, hello. Hi, how are you guys? Comfortable, am I? Hi, good, good. How are you? Good to see you, Kimberly. Hi, how are you getting in? Hi, how are you? Kimberly, you should get a hug. Hi, how are you?
I'm honored tonight to recognize these fine young men and women who attend 6th Grade at Lindley 6th Grade Academy. They participated in a project through Cobb County's 4-H to give back to their community. And the project that they chose was the Socket To Me Project with the school, where they collected more than 300 pairs of socks to provide to those who go without this everyday resource that so many of us take for granted. And they contacted my office to see where they could be of best use, and ended up choosing two different locations. One, which was the United Way Shoebox Project. For those of you who are aware of that, they provide shoeboxes for homeless women and children, filled with articles and bathroom supplies. And they also decided to provide socks to Woodland Assistant Living Center, and they were greatly appreciative of you guys being there. A lot of us, you see, that are on the Board of Commissioners, we serve, but we serve at a, certainly at a more generous age than you. And to be thinking about serving at this age, I think is incredible, and to do it and coming up with your own project and giving back to your community, and giving back to those who probably would not think about someone giving back to them, I think is very impressive. And if you can have this type of mindset at this age, I know that you guys will all be incredible leaders as you guys mature. So I want to thank you for your service. I would like to thank the 4-H staff for investing in these young men and women in this program, and give you an opportunity to share a little bit about their project and what 4-H does.
Thank you, Commissioner Cupid and the Board for recognizing not only these great young people, but their leaders, their school leaders here. And we could not do this without the help of our sponsor teachers. So I want to thank our sponsor teachers for just working with us monthly. 4-H is the largest, or the longest, youth organization in existence, and we pride ourselves on those 4-H's hands, heart, head, heart, hands, and health. And so by giving, that's one of those characteristics of being a part of 4-H. And these young people have done just that, and not only have they done that for this particular community service, but throughout the year. And I just commend them. They come to us because they choose to, it's not a forceful thing. So this is, you know, again, I commend them for just being with 4-H and continuing to excel through this program. And you're right, Commissioner Cupid, this is just the beginning. If they're doing this now, we can only imagine what they're gonna be doing a couple of years from now. So I thank you all, I thank our sponsor teachers, I thank the school administrators for supporting our program. Youth development is all about what we do, and so I thank the county for supporting us as well.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, and thank you, teachers, for your participation. Can we give them a round of applause, please? Before we take a picture, can you guys just share your name?
Alexis Jones.
Barrington Bellinger.
Caleb Brunson.
Ianni Wilson.
Atara Cummings.
Paul Bearman.
Alicia Williams.
Elizabeth James.
Thank you again. Can line up for our picture? Thank you guys so much. Thank you for being here. Thank you, nice to meet you too.
Item 4 is to recognize McKeechern High School's girls' basketball team. Commissioner?
Yes, if I can have the ladies' basketball teammates come up front, please, and coaches.
Ooh, that's a tall row back there.
They've got some generous height there.
They do.
Generous.
About to find out how height challenged Commissioner Cupid is.
Good evening, good to see you, Principal Coe. Good to see you. Good to see you. Thank you for being here. Tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing some stellar athletes that we have here in the South Cobb area. These young ladies and these coaches have been part of a winning team, where over the past four years, they have won three state championships in, I believe it's the 6A, yes, division in basketball, which is not a small feat. And year after year, you turn out excellent women in this program, and you do some excellent things to bring honor to not only their effort, but to the school and the Cobb County's program. And I want to thank you for your efforts on the court. Some of these ladies, they look so sweet here, and you know, they have to be intimidating on the court for them to do this and just conquer, you know, the counties that we have represented here in Georgia. So with me tonight, I have a number of certificates that I would like to provide in recognition of all of your efforts on the court. First, we have a certificate for Coach Phyllis Arthur. And if you can provide, how long have you been coaching? At McKeechern? This is my ninth year. My ninth year. And out of those nine years, how many of your, how many of your teams have gone on to the state championships? Four. That's an excellent record, and I think should be commended. And tonight, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you and the McKeechern Girls' Basketball Team on earning the state class 6A championship. Under your excellent leadership, the Lady Indians defeated Norcross High School in a close game of 58 to 51 in the championship game, winning a third state title in four years. We are proud of all your accomplishments thus far, and thank you for the positive role you have played in helping guide our youth. Do we have Assistant Coach Myra Camese here tonight? Okay, so this is for her as well. Oops. Number of certificates here. I have more certificates than I see athletes here tonight, so, yes, if you could move these more, I'd appreciate it. Tia Cooper here tonight? Taya, not here? Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Jasmine Clements? No? Okay. Alyssa Smith guarding? Okay. Zeandria Bridges? All right, thank you, congratulations. You're welcome. Thank you. It's always good to have a wingman. Victoria Adgen? Adgen, congratulations. Yes. Thank you. Damia McPherson? Damia? There you go. Congratulations. Elizabeth Allen? Okay. Simone Oliver? Okay. Tiara Lindsay? No, no, no. Chanel Wilson? Shiera Morris? Okay. Lindsey Wilby? Okay, congratulations, Lindsey. Kalia Robinson? Okay. And Jada Lewis? Okay. Well, I see we have a couple more people on the end here who are heavyweights of McKeechern High School. We have the principal. We can have you introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Regina Montgomery, and I'm the principal, proud principal, of McKeechern High School. And with me is Coach Jimmy Dorsey, who is our athletic director. Thank you, Commissioner Cupid, for having us. We too are very proud of these young ladies and our coaching staff, and we're glad that you recognize the great things that they're doing.
Item number five, to present certificates of recognition to McKeechern's High School's 2014 Cobb County Touchdown Honorees. Commissioner Cupid.
Not only do we have stellar female athletes at McKeechern, but we have some stellar male athletes as well who have been part of their football team. At our last BOC meeting, we recognized some great champions who attend school at South Cobb High School, and tonight, we have some honorers who attend McKeechern who we'd like to recognize. Well, I'm gonna find out who's here tonight. Nick DeMassimo, okay. So tonight, we have with us two special gentlemen who are unique athletes at McKeechern who have had some impressive stats that I will read to you. We have a couple here tonight. No Julie in Rochester. One of them is Bailey Hockman. Bailey Hockman. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you on being honored at the Cobb County Touchdown Club banquet for your many achievements. As a freshman, you stepped in for an injured teammate and led McKeechern High School's football team to the state semifinals. In the short season, you threw for more than 1,000 yards at a 50% completion ratio. That is excellent. Your success in big games earned national attention, and you were named as a Second Team Freshman All-American. As a sophomore, you again led your team to the state semifinals, completing 188 passes for almost 3,600 yards. Named First Team All-State in both the Associated Press and Atlanta Journal-Constitution polls, you also earned an invitation to the Junior Elite Classic. We wish you continued success at McKeechern and in your continued future endeavors. Thank you. Congratulations. Excellent job. I should have invited the parents up here like I did with South Cobb High School, because we have a bit of a gem here. Not only is he a stellar athlete at McKeechern High School, he's the son of one of our own Cobb County employees, Cobb County DOT Director Fay DeMassimo. Tonight, we have with us Nick DeMassimo. His mom is a heavyweight here at the county, I want you to know that. You may be on the field. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you on being honored at the Cobb County Touchdown Club banquet for your many achievements. As a two-year starting insider, inside linebacker for McKeechern High School, you were the team's leading tackler your senior season with 120 tackles, 67 solo. That's all right. You also added three sacks and one interception to your impressive accomplishments. Selected as an all-county player and an all-county scholar athlete, you are also honored with your team's captain award and the McKeechern Academic Award, boasting on top of that a 4.2 GPA. We are proud of all you have achieved thus far. I didn't know you can get more than a 4.0. You are really smart. Boasting a 4.2 GPA, we are proud of all you have achieved thus far, and wish you the best as you continue your academic and athletic career at Davidson University. Congratulations, Mike. And do we have a coach with us tonight? If you can talk a little bit about your experience with the team?
We got two great young men here and a few others that have already gone on to college as an early enrollee. I graduated early and got their certificates here, but Bailey and Nick are special parts of an outstanding program, and fine young men representing this county and for sure our school very, very well. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your sacrifice in coaching. We'll line up for a picture.
So the last agenda item under presentation is number six, and is to present Cobb County Transit Employee of the Quarter awards to three transit operations employees. County manager, if you'd join us, please. So a little bit about the background. Cobb County Transit is committed to ensuring the safety and security of its passengers, and is committed to increasing customer satisfaction for all aspects of the transit service delivery. To promote this initiative, CCT has implemented Employee of the Quarter Award. The recipients of this award serve as outstanding role models of excellence, leaderships, and innovation, whose accomplishments have greatly improved service delivery and customer satisfaction. We not only congratulate these individuals for job well done, but also thank them for their hard work and dedication to CCT. This quarter, we have three winners, and Director, if you'd come up with your former So the first person we want to recognize tonight is Ray George, who is Regional Marketing and Customers Relations Director. A native of San Diego, California, she grew up in the transit industry. Both of her parents are retirees of the San Diego Metropolitan Transit System. Additionally, her grandfather owned and operated his own long-haul freight company. After graduating from Hosta University in 2005, she moved to San Francisco and began her career in transportation, working in operations and business development for Arkansas... Arkansas... It's been a real long day. Best Freight Systems, ABF. In 2010, I knew it as ABF, but in 2010, she began her career with TransDes Equinette County Transit, Marketing and Customer Relations Manager. In 2011, she also took over paratransit operations for GCT. Recently, in 2014, she was promoted to a Regional Marketing and Customer Relations Director. This new position afforded her the opportunity to join Cobb Community Transit Team and continued working closely with Equinette County Transit. Ray has worked diligently to complete the Flex branding, Flex marketing campaign, and implementation of the Flex Bus Service. She is extremely committed to improving CCT's customer service department and improving the community's perception of Cobb Community Transit. Please congratulate... Please congratulate one of our Employee of the Quarters winners, Ray George. The second individual we'd like to recognize as Employee of the Quarter is Travis Helms. He's Electronic Technician. A native of Gainesville, Florida, he has demonstrated his propensity for all things mechanical and electrical since he was a young child. He has been reprimanded on more than one occasion for tinkering with his father's tools. When he was 19, he started working for his pops at Coolitt Auto Air in Mableton, Georgia. During his 10-year apprenticeship, he learned the ins and outs of his trade. And in 2006, he began working at AirServe as a metal fabricator and welder, where he worked his way up to shop foreman. In 2013, he joined the TransDAS team as an electronics technician, where he has been instrumental in managing the AVL fare box and destination signs of a fleet of 131 vehicles. Travis loves that he has the ability to take on a problem, project, and overcome the challenges to see it through to completion. He is proud of what he has accomplished, as are we, and is motivated by a good job done. Congratulations to Travis Helms. Travis, as any consolation, I used to tinker with my dad's stuff and by the time I was 16, he put locks on his toolbox. There you go, more tinkering. Director DeMassimo?
We're just very, very proud. CCT has really done an incredible job this year of improving the overall service, improving customer service, and we are just very proud of what all you represent for the accomplishments that we've had.
And I wanted to ask Brittany Barrett to come up also. She's with TransDAS. We have one other employee that we wanted to honor tonight, Donna Woodson, who is our Operations Manager, but Donna had a family emergency and couldn't be here. But we'll see that she gets her certificate. Again, my heartfelt thanks to this team. They are why we are doing as well as we can. My tenure here, they've been extraordinarily supportive. They've been a great contractor to work with. And I leave the system in very capable hands.
Congratulations. Well, job well done. Well done. Takes us to tab four, SunTrust Park update. Mr. Hankerson, County Manager.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and the Board, and I'm proud to come and present an update since our last month's meeting. Our first slides, two or three slides, is going to show the status of the site, which I will talk about later, but we have four tower cranes. You can go ahead to the next one. And then actually show I had the opportunity at their new marketing and ticketing office to overlook the site. And I tell you, that's a true representation of what's going on at the site today. Go ahead to the next one. SunTrust Park on public safety, there's a lot of activity going as it relates to public safety and working with Atlanta Police and the Braves on the organizational structure and organizing off-duty personnel. The director and staff has been working with Atlanta Police to identify traffic points and organizing on-duty personnel. They've been working with the Atlanta Fire Department and the Braves regarding fireworks and the inspection of the concession stands. Now also, they're working with the National Guard regarding security and safety monitoring for hazards. Also, working with K-9 and working with the stadium engineers regarding safety. As a part of the activity, they have actually attended games to see and get behind the scenes to see how things work and observe and to be able to ask more questions. Go to the next one. Winter Hill, actual construction on the Cobb Parkway to Powell's Ferry. It's actually, according to Mr. DeMassimo, they're active on both sides of the interstate. A majority of the construction has been focused on the eastern end of the project. And the DDI is scheduled to be let in September 2015. That's the Divergent Diamond Interchange. And the transportation project, all projects in the immediate area of the SunTrust Park are active in design. Discussion takes place at DDoPs on all projects that need an encouragement. And the Winter Ridge Bridge proposal received on April 23rd, which they are currently evaluating those proposals. The Circulator, Cobb Cumberland residents, employees, and visitors surveys underway had an opportunity with the CCT passengers completed over 550 surveys during a multi-day outreach effort. And the development of operational draft plan is, draft operation plan is underway, which include evaluations of route alternatives. On construction, the deep foundations are complete. As you can also note from that, there are quite a few there. Elevated concrete deck pours begun April 15th. Slab-on-grade proceeding in tandem. All four towers, cranes are up in full operational. And American Builders has gone to a six-day work week to try to aggressively pour, to more aggressive with the pouring on the site. So they've gone very aggressive there. Couple of other things. Mr. Chair. Today, there was a big announcement at the Braves site with Omni Hotel and a partnership with a new four-star hotel. Approximately 260 rooms, following the announcement of the Comcast building last month of the nine stories, which on that site, they announced would be 1,000 jobs and about 800 of those would be new jobs. So that's a big announcement. It seems that some of the things we've been talking about actually is coming to fruition. Also, to date, Cobb County subcontractors award to date is approximately 200 million. Represents 76% of the subcontractors award to date. Bid package number four of receiving current and evaluation analysis for contract awards. So they're going through those processes as well. And they've also held over 14 business outreach meetings or events and hosted over 2,500 attendees. So everything is happening, everything is going along well, Mr. Chairman, and that's an update since our last meeting last month.
Thank you. Great update. Is there any questions or comments on the board? Thank you, Mr. Hankerson. Tab five, Community Development. We have two items. The first is to conduct a second public hearing to solicit comments and input on the amendment of Chapter 134 of the Official Code of Cobb County. Good evening Dana. Evening Dana.
Evening Chairman. My name is Dana Johnson with Cobb County Community Development. Commissioners, County Manager, thank you very much. We are here asking for you to please open the second public hearing on the Section 134-1 and Section 134-37 in regards to private parks. Since our last meeting, there has been a slight alteration in the code structure from our first public hearing that was held. The first code structure contained language where a lot of the definition section of a private park was contained with the regulatory section. And then in correspondence with the County Attorney's Office, we thought it would proper to take the definitions portion of that and move that to the Section 134-1, keeping the regulatory section in the 134-37 area. So that is what the change occurred between these two meetings. And I want to explain that so it was understood why that change happened the way it did. It's a better form and easier to defend as it relates to possible challenges in regard to that code. With that, I would ask you to please open the public hearing. And depending on the board's will, if you chose to do so, you would be able to consider the amendment if that's the desire of the board.
Thank you Dana. At this point, we'll open up the public hearing for this item. Each speaker will have three minutes. Those wishing to speak on this item, please go forward.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Jill Flam and I'm with East Cobb Civic Association. East Cobb Civic Association is concerned about the need to put in specifics about what will be allowed in a private park and what is omitted. Our specific concerns are in regard to putting these private parks in established residential areas. Saying that they will be consistent with those in Cobb County parks does not really limit the possibilities. And here are just some of the uses allowed in Cobb County parks. A BMX park, which could possibly be expanded to include velodromes, motorized vehicle parks, such as those for go-karts, motorcycles, ATVs, or cars. Dog parks. Water parks. The county has smaller versions of these in their indoor and outdoor pool facilities. When does a private water park cross over to a commercial white water? Should there be a size limit? Outdoor amphitheaters. The county does own one of those. And then auditoriums and gymnasiums. Would year-round swim, gymnastic, basketball teams be able to build their facilities in residential areas? What about height issues? The neighbors objected with Mountain View Aquatic Facility was supposed to have a diving well and forced the county to lower the roof. Parking is also an issue as the meets, tournaments can run all weekend. If the facility can be rented up by outside groups such as high schools, these events could occur quite often. And one use that has been omitted from this section is driving ranges. This is a concern as the avenues of East Cobb came into being when a court ruled that while the driving range was zoned residential, it was being used for commercial and the land could be sold for commercial. Will driving ranges be allowed in a private park? If so, will they be limited in height in residentially zoned areas? The driving ranges of my youth have changed with an example of the now three-story Topgolf Driving Range facility. We recommend adding driving ranges to be included in the uses requiring a slot. Bottom line, we recommend that all private parks, no matter what they are used for, profit or nonprofit, require a slot. Each must be examined with regard to impact to the community on an individual case basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
My name's Craig Harfwood. Good evening Commissioners. I'm glad she came up here and let us know what was really going on. But she left out one thing that I don't think anybody's got on their radar. What about a nudist colony? You know? These things, the way things are going these days, same-sex marriages, Attorney General caving in on that. You know, you really need to go through a process and not just say, okay, check, you can have it. All these things need to be examined one by one, just like zoning. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Dana, as you mentioned, at this point, it is up to the board to determine whether they want to take up adoption of the revision as presented or if we want to take on any other action. I know that Commissioner Burrow had some thoughts. Would you like to lead our conversation, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to some emails that we have received for the record and maybe some confusion or misconception of what actually constitutes a private park, I think I would like to recommend, and I think I would like to see if the board supports that, we extend the moratorium until June 1st. It's currently May 1st. Extend that to June 1st and direct staff to make the, tweak these definitions and code a little bit more, I guess, accurately and also respond to the public comments and the emails that we've received for clarification and bring this back for our second Tuesday meeting in May for a vote.
What I hear is more or less a request. I'm not sure I heard a motion in there.
Well, that's what I would recommend. I would, I'd like to ask if the board agrees and I'll make a motion.
Well, let's get a motion first and get a second before we go into full discussion.
I would like to make a motion that we extend the moratorium on private parks till June 1st, 2015, and direct staff to make additional clarification with the comments and input we've received from the public and come back to us with a final draft for a decision or vote on the May 12th BOC meeting. That's the first. Two weeks, in two weeks. May 12th, correct?
So it's May, yeah, it'll be May 12th.
I'll second it.
That'd be a day meeting, which is contrary to your editorial.
Right. And one thing I, well, let's make the motion.
So we got a motion, we got a second by Commissioner, go ahead Commissioner Burrow.
I would just like to say that because we have a moratorium in place now, we have done the proper advertising in the 30 days for the, and this is our second and final public hearing. There will not be a public hearing before the vote on May 12th. However, the public is welcome to come and sign up under public comment if they wish to speak at that time.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I know that Commissioner Cupid will be out of town for that meeting, so you'll provide us with your thoughts prior to the meeting and we'll convey those forward. We have a motion, we have a second, any other comments, call a question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you Dana, appreciate your work on that and look forward to your revised draft in a couple of weeks.
I'd like to add thank you to you and your staff in the County Attorney's Office as well.
Second item, sir.
Yes, sir. The second item is to request the Board of Commissioners to hold a public hearing to receive comments on the 10-year update to the Cobb County Comprehensive Plan for a document known as the Cobb 2040 Plan Development Document. This is the framework document for how over the next two years, we're going to go about involving the community in our input to the Comprehensive Plan. And so we are asking for you to hold a public hearing. And at the conclusion of that, you will be provided the opportunity to make any, to decide on that if you wish to approve that as a formal plan document.
Thank you. At this time, we will open a public hearing to receive comments on the 10-year update to Cobb County Comprehensive Plan Framework Document called the Cobb 24 Plan Development. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing and hearing none, the public comment period is closed. If the board would entertain the following, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the Cobb 2040 Plan Development Framework Document as presented by staff, a document dated March 24th, 2015.
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Weatherford. Any other comments or questions? All the questions, motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much Dana. We look forward to that two-year process.
Thank you, Commissioner.
The next tab is tab six, Finance. To conduct a private hearing, to conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to secure the provision of administrative services for Cobb County's grant program. Mr. Hughes?
Good evening Chairman, Commissioners. The purpose of this agenda item is to request obviously that the board conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to secure the services, professional services for the county's grant program that receive funding from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. By way of brief background, the board approved in March the, or authorized the advertisement for and conduct of these public hearings. Those notices appeared in the MDJ on April 10th, 17th, and 24th. The current contract with the vendor expires in September 30th of this year. And with that background, Mr. Chairman, we ask that you open this public hearing.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up a public hearing for this item and this item. Each speaker has three minutes. Is anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. This takes us to tab seven, Public Comment.
You have one speaker, Mr. Craig Harfwood. Would you please come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Craig Harfwood. And I just want to make some comments about the state of our county and state and our federal government. You know, we just went through tax season, got no help from the RRS in trying to find out how to figure out, fill out forms and such. And it seems like the state's looking to go from income tax to sales tax and other fees. And it looks like the feds are racked in the same way because there's no staff, even at the IRS, to answer a question to file for your taxes. So the thing about it is that we, I have, like a lot of people, graduate adult children who are stuck and not able to get full-time jobs because all our major companies like Kroger and Publix and Home Depot, you know, all these things are saying unemployment's down, but you know what? We don't have full employment. Our economy is in a downward spiral. I mean, I look at stuff on eBay. There's less and less activity on eBay. People don't have money even for yard sales. I mean, the activity in yard sales is even down. And I think that's, that's real telling and it's troublesome. And they'll blame it on this healthcare law. There are actually people in companies that are on salary to monitor this, make sure no one gets more than part-time hours. And I know that for a fact. And the thing about it is, nobody has the extra money to spend. You know, you're building this big complex around the Braves, but you know, you've got to have extra money to go and do these things. And I'm telling you, the youth doesn't. I was talking about it to one of my neighbors that I see on occasion. And, you know, the conversation moved along and, you know, she was talking about, she used to sell at Olivia Morgan and it went away and said something about her daughter graduated from Auburn and she had to move to Charleston and started a business there because nothing's happening here. And another, and then she goes on to tell me about, at her church in Roswell, a young man started a business and he failed and he was a college graduate with student loans and all that good stuff. Comes home, lives with his parents, and he was delivering meds for, you know, the nursing homes. He kills himself. Now, this is a bad thing, people. I mean, it's like if our kids are that desperate, you know, that they can't find good jobs because they don't exist. I mean, you're doing all this stuff, but it's not creating real jobs. And we don't have full employment. And it's not, I'm not going to say it's Democrats or Republicans, they're both in it together strangling us. I mean, the way they're doing this thing, they're literally choking the life out of our children. And I think it's crime. And we need to see better ideas coming out of this board. It all starts local, like they've said. And then you watch these little things going on within our party. And I think the Republican Party in Cobb County has been taken over by a Democrat now. But, you know, Sam Olins, Nathan Deal, they're all Democrats before they're Republicans. I mean, I don't know what, how some of you were. The whole deal is, what does it matter if you're choking us to death? And I was listening to this old song and it was saying, you know, you'll find out that your servant is your master. And it was, that's government. The government's our servant, but now it's our master. And it shouldn't be. You're, I mean, what I'm trying to get to is, we need an environment friendly for people to do their businesses. I mean, you've got these colleges going nuts. They changed the law so that private people can own and build apartments on the universities and not pay taxes on them. But you know what? They're all living off student loans. So what happens to these kids once they graduate and there's no way to pay back the student loan? It's just like our military. You're going to see depression and suicide rates go up. And that is not what we want to see, especially when our kids. And I mean, I'm talking about anybody's kid. Thank you very much.
That takes us to Tab 8, our Consent Agenda. Commissioners, I'd like to pull 23 for consideration in our next agenda. I also like to pull on 32 to take as a separate item upon completion of considering the items in the consent agenda. So with that, I will bring forward a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of necessary documents for the appropriate county personnel. Here's a second by Commissioner Ott. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Now, the latest item, 32, you recall that it's a, the purpose is to authorize the award of a Cobb Community Foundation Grants, part of a program that was presented Friday. I would like to do this. I would like to have a first motion that excludes the award to Must Ministries. And then I would recuse myself from the diocese and ask the county, the chair or the vice chair to take up that item on its own independently. So I want to bring forward recommendations that the Board of Commissioners approve the grantee list for the 2015 Community Impact Grants, authorize the board's approval of the intergovernmental agreement with the Cobb Community Foundation for the management of the Community Impact Grants, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents as presented on the attachment I presented you with the exclusion of the award to Must Ministry, which will be taken up as a separate item. That would be my motion as a second. Any comments? Call the question. That motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Ott voting against it. I will not recuse myself and allow the vice chairman to lead our discussion regarding the allocation to Must Ministries as my wife is an employee of Must Ministries. Commissioner Burrow.
I will make a motion that we approve the impact grant to Must Ministries.
Second.
Second. Call a question? Call a question? Oh, I'm sorry. Motion carries 3-1 with Chairman Lee recusing himself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. That takes us to item 9, Transportation Agency Director DeMassimo.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners and County Manager. Our first item tonight is to approve supplemental agreement number 1 to work authorization 2 of the Program Management Contract with Atkins North America for the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. Supplemental Agreement Number 1 to Work Authorization 2 in an amount not to exceed $1,299,600 is requested for additional program management services as detailed in the agenda item. We request the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number 1 to work authorization 2 of the Program Management Contract with Atkins North America, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $1,299,600 for the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'll bring this item forward in the form of a motion for approval. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Burrow. Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item 2, please.
Item 2, to approve a contract with, and I'm going to make a clarification statement as a part of presenting this agenda item, to approve a contract with For You Services, Inc., Doing Business As Stellar Services, Inc., for application development and support of Project View, Project Number E 5050. Transportation Technology is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signal timing, and planning component of the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with For You Services, Inc., Doing Business As Stellar Services, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $210,000 for application of and development and support of Project View, Project Number E 5050.
Thank you. Commissioners, I will bring this forward as a form of a motion as presented and revised and presented by the director. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Item 3, please.
To approve change order number 3, final to the contract with GP's Enterprises for thoroughfare improvements on Barrett Parkway. Barrett Parkway is an approved thoroughfare improvements project in the 2005 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number 3, final to the contract with GP's Enterprises with a savings to the project in the amount of $3,125,452.73 for thoroughfare improvements on Barrett Parkway, Project Number D 4010.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thanks, sir. I'd like to bring forth a motion, always happy to do so where it saves us money, as presented.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Item 4, please.
To approve change order number 1, final to the contract with Summit Construction and Development, LLC, for improvements on Old Sewell Road Sidewalk, Project Number E 7160. Old Sewell Road Sidewalk is an approved school-related, safe routes to school project in the sidewalk component of the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number 1, final to the contract with Summit Construction and Development, LLC, with a savings to the project in the amount of $153,684.69 for improvements on Old Sewell Road Sidewalk, Project Number E 7160.
Thank you. Commissioner Ott.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries 5-0. Item 5, please.
To approve change order number 1, final to the resurfacing contract 2014-3 Local Roads North with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., for resurfacing of county-maintained streets and operational improvements on Sandy Plains Road at Wiggly Road, Project Number E 9120. Resurfacing is an approved component in the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number 1, final to the resurfacing contract 2014-3 Local Roads North with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $11,450.46 for resurfacing of county-maintained streets and operational improvements on Sandy Plains Road at Wiggly Road, Project Number E 9120.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call the question.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Just wanted to point out, and this is a major.
Intersection improvement here and appreciate the assistance of DOT.
Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Item 6, please.
To approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Powder Springs for the resurfacing of Pine Grove Drive located within the city limits of Powder Springs, Project Number E 9160. Resurfacing is an approved component in the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Powder Springs in an amount not to exceed $42,431.94 for the resurfacing of Pine Grove Drive located within the city limits of Powder Springs.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Next item.
To approve a memorandum of agreement with SunCap Atlanta LLC and authorize the acceptance of a developer contribution for thoroughfare improvements on Factory Shuttles Road, Project Number E 4220. SunCap Atlanta LLC has acquired approximately 57 acres of land located in the vicinity of Factory Shuttles Road and White Road in the South Cobb redevelopment area. SunCap plans to construct an approximately 307,000-square-foot industrial building on the site. The department had previously identified the need for thoroughfare improvements on Factory Shuttles Road from the county line to White Road consisting of realignment of vertical curves and the addition of curb and gutter. The county will fund $600,000 for right-of-way utility and construction costs and funding is available in the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program and from a state, local maintenance and improvement grant. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve a memorandum of agreement with SunCap Atlanta LLC in a form substantially similar to the attached and as approved by the county attorney's office for the thoroughfare improvements on Factory Shuttles Road, Project Number E 4220, authorize the acceptance of a developer contribution in an amount not to exceed $1,951,086, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This is a significant project in District 4 which will help facilitate the addition of a FedEx distribution site. And I'm grateful for the developer in them investing beyond just their business, but in the area with this project. That motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Director. Takes us to Tab 10, one item. Good evening, John.
Good evening, Commissioners. This agenda item deals with a project of the 2011 SLOST specifically to replace the exterior wooden doors at the Smyrna Health Facility. That's on South Cobb Drive. We received three bids for this work and we recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Ben's Winger Glass in the amount of $29,950 for the 2011 SLOST replacement of exterior doors and transoms project at the Smyrna Health Department located at 3830 South Cobb Drive, Smyrna. Establish a contingency in the amount of $3,000 for unforeseen conditions and authorize corresponding budget transactions.
Thank you. Commissioner Ott.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Tab 11, it's the county manager's tab. Mr. Hankerson.
Mr. Chairman, with the departure of Mr. Robert Quigley, there's a need to reappoint someone to represent the departments that he represented at the time. There are a number of coordinators in various departments that can't open records, but those will remain the same and I'm going to recommend to you that we appoint legal or designate Ms. Dance as an open record officer as the department has identified above that relates to the commissions and the same departments that Robert Quigley represented.
Perfect. I concur. We want to clarify, though, that Robert Quigley just didn't up and leave us. Correct? He.
He moved over to the sheriff's office.
Yeah, and we congratulate him and wish him well in that regard.
Yes, sir.
So Commissioners, I'll bring forward, as Mr. Hankerson's recommendation is presented, and ask for a second. Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our second public comment. Ms. Dance. There are none. That takes us to Tab 13. Our appointments, there is one item to be presented by Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion to reappoint Donna Rowe to the Cobb County Development Authority. She's served for the last six years and I think she's done a great job and so the motion is to reappoint her.
Multiple seconds, it's me. I can't believe it's been six years. Call the question. Motion carries 4-0. Good luck figuring that one out, guys. Tab 14, Colony, the Commissioners' Public Address. We'll start with Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a couple of town hall or community meetings to kind of remind folks about. Tomorrow night, I will have a joint town hall meeting with Mayor Max Bacon in Smyrna. That begins at 7:00 and that'll be in the community center. It's an opportunity for folks in the Smyrna area to learn about what's going on in the city and in the unincorporated part of the county. Also, on May 12th, and as we said, you know, we don't have another meeting before then, I will have a town hall meeting in the East Cobb area at the Mount Bethel United Methodist Church and that'll be from 7:00 to 8:30. Once again, an opportunity for the folks in East Cobb to find out what's going on over in that area. There will also be, I didn't write down the date, the Powers Ferry one. Okay, on May 11th, thank you, there will be a meeting hosted by Cobb County Community Development. I know there was some confusion by some of the folks in the area. And basically, it's a update on the Powers Ferry Road master plan. That'll be held at Brumby Elementary School at 6:30. And on May 6th, for those interested in what's going on with East Cobb Middle School, the school system will hold its first public information meeting on the replacement of the East Cobb Middle School and that is from 6:30 to 7:30. And finally, the last, I'd like to do a little bit of a shout-out to our fleets department. They have been ranked in the top 50 fleets in the entire North America, which I think is a great accomplishment.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
Yes. Thank you. I would first like to thank Heath and Lineback for inviting me to their open house last Thursday. It was a great event and a special thank you to John Heath for serving on the Canton Road Redevelopment Foundation. They just celebrated their 20th year anniversary in business and they are located on Canton Road. Our next How to Do Business with Cobb Seminar will be. Our next How to Do Business with Cobb seminar will be May the 7th, Thursday evening, five to seven, here at the BOC Meeting Room. It's free to attend, but you do need to register. So you can call my office or email my assistant, inger.eberhart@cobbcounty.org. On May the 9th, I'm sorry, yeah, May the 9th, from nine to four, at Aarolessence, 1091 Lake Drive, they will be hosting a yard sale. It's open to the public, and if you want to donate any items for their foundation, they need any kind of clothing, accessories, books, toys, appliances, furniture by Saturday, May 2nd, and that is located at 1091 Lake Drive. All funds raised will be donated to the Aarolessence Foundation to make a better world for those with autism. Save the date, the next Fur Fest at Animal Control will be from 10 to four, Saturday, May 16th, at the animal shelter. The event is part of Cobb County Animal Control's continuing efforts through public awareness and community involvement to find forever homes for the homeless and abandoned animals that come to the shelter. And my husband and I have two beagles that we rescued from the Cobb County Animal Shelter, and they make wonderful pets.
Your husb-
The dogs.
The dogs.
KSU is hosting the Shaky Boots Music Festival on May 16th and 17th, and it's a location, the location is KSU campus, and it will be a multi-day, multi-stage country music event. For more information, visit http://shakyboots.com. And that's all I have.
Wonderful, thank you. Are you going to not talk about tomorrow morning?
Oh, gosh. Yeah, one on my sheet. I'm sorry. Tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, at the Aquatics Center, Gordy Parkway and Sandy Plains, we will be honoring a very, very dear and special couple, David and Helga Hong, by naming a street Hong Way after them. They have been public servants and volunteered for many, many years, 20, 25 years, almost 30 years for David, in this community and given so much to Cobb and District Three and all of Cobb. So if you are available, we'd love to have you come out. Our Attorney General, Sam Olens, will be there to say a few words, and just hope you can attend and honor the special couple. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to announce that last night I had the privilege of having a joint State of the City Town Hall meeting with the City of Acworth, and that was well attended. In the next few months, I'll be having one out in West Cobb. Last week, with Commissioner Ott, we're privileged to attend the American Heart Association's breakfast, having been of generous age, I believe is what you said. Yeah, she was talking about me, I was generous age. Somehow or another, I signed something, and now I have a heart walk team that I'm gathering together for October the 24th.
We both will have a team.
Don't listen to his team. My team is Weatherford's Walkers, and you can go to Metro Atlanta Heart Walk and sign up. I will have rescue standing by. I'm equipping a hover round with extra batteries, and I'm going to lead from behind with this heart walk, but we'll have a link on the weekly newsletter, and the goal is by 2020 for the improved cardiovascular health of all Americans by 20%, and it's a worthy cause as it's one of the leading causes of death among all ages and all genders. So don't forget, sign up for Weatherford's Walkers, not Ott's Losers. Thank you.
Commissioner Kupid.
Yes. In the spirit of recognizing the diversity of age we have here, I wanted to acknowledge a team of young people who I see leaving, but it was encouraging to see them here during the meeting, which gives me some encouragement, as I don't think it's ever too early to start getting involved in local politics, or, excuse me, public service. I do want to make you aware, for those of you who are in the district, that we canceled our annual safety block party off of Six Flags due to inclement weather this past weekend, and it will be rescheduled for Saturday, June 6th, at Parkview Apartments from the same time, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and hope that you come out and enjoy that opportunity to meet many of the men and women who serve here in public safety. I'd also like to share, we have our annual Mabelton Day. I believe it's our 10th annual Mabelton Day coming up Saturday, May 16th. It will kick off with a 5K, which you can choose to walk, run, perhaps hover around in the 5K, and there's a big, really, community celebration that takes place that afternoon, and hope that you can come out to that as well. And finally, I wanted to take the Chairman's thunder, but Chairman Lee will be hosting a town hall meeting in the district tomorrow evening at 6:30 at the South Cobb Recreation Center, and hope that you also come out and participate in that event as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate you mentioning that meeting tomorrow night. We look forward to being in your district as well. Second, additionally, on May 11th, we will be out at the West Cobb Senior Center from 6:30 to 8:00, and this is Commissioner Weatherford's district, for a second town hall. And the last item I'd like to bring forward is that this Saturday at 9:00, it's the Second Annual Aging Summit 2015 to be held at Cobb Galleria. This is an excellent program for those that are-
Generous.
Generous, or those that are approaching generous, and are folks that are caregivers for senior community. There's a lot of good information that's presented concerning care and housing and aging in place, and we have some excellent speakers and excellent program. So I encourage you to attend that event if you can. It's the Aging Summit 2015. It's at Galleria, Cobb Galleria Center, and it starts at 9:00, and it promises to be a significant event. I see from the sign from Vanna and Commissioner, you have something else?
That was a private exchange note.
Sure was. She just held up a big sign.
We want to get you to the right place tomorrow. If you go to the Recreation Center, you will be there with Few and Company. The Chairman will actually be hosting his town hall meeting at the South Cobb Community Center, not Recreation Center, and that's at 620 Lyons Club Drive.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
At least I'll be in the right place. Mr. Hankerson, anything further?
No, Senator.
We adjourned.